Okay, so I will call the meeting to order. And we'll start with doing um a roll call of committee members.
Let's start.
Susan, I've been getting here.
Tricia, I'm there too here.
Kate McDonald here.
Kelly Mackey here.
Was that our only mem- like members? An amazing support team. Um, okay, so we'll do the invocation uh invocation school verse and I'll read it. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school. So then that will take us to one point four and audience to address the committee. I'm guessing it's everybody that's there, right? So we just have Jim. So seen then we will move to one point five agenda modifications. Do you have any agenda modification? Okay, so see then we'll go to one point six approval of minutes from May ninth. And I briefly read through them, but I wasn't here, so it didn't really help me any, so. So if anybody wants to make a motion to approve though.
I can make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Thanks.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So first in a second, any further discussion? Okay, let's call for the vote.
Susan Dominican, I.
Tricia, I.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Okay, motion passes. Over to number two, financial reports. Jim, I think that goes over to you, right?
Yeah, I I was looking at this and I realized it's all budget all the time. And so there was no financial update. I was like, where's the financial update? Oh, right. So it's kind of like twenty-two, twenty-three, no one cares anymore. Uh, but we will get that for the, we will get that for the next meeting. All the focus was on the budget.
And is there, is he, does he have? Yes, so do we have? No, he doesn't. So we should have the balance, we should have the warrants and or the point of sale transaction.
Oh, yeah, and the credit card.
Review those.
Okay, so so there's nothing for attendance or cash flow, two point one and two and
One is all his reports.
That we don't have.
Okay, we won't have them.
And we don't have balance sheet, so aged payables, warrants and aged payables, you know. I have that either, right?
Do we have? Payables, payables is only two hundred dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, everything under two point one is what's usually in gems.
Okay, so I don't have any of that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So two point two point of cell transactions and check register. So did anybody have any questions on this or have a chance to review it? Do we need to accept these one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to accept the point of sale transactions and check register.
I will second that. I have seen all these already.
Perfect. First in a second, any uh further discussion? Questions? Okay, so we can go to the vote.
Susan Dominican, I.
Tricia, I'm there too, I.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Okay, that is accepted. Um, credit card statement is next. I did have a question. Our goal from whatever college to pay it off every month, right? And this month I did not, so I didn't know if it was just uh busy busy time at the end of the school year or if it was a
We we have, it would be busy time at the end of the school year, anything there's we're working on the timing of when they give us the bill as to when it gets processed through chartering. Okay, sometimes the payment doesn't get in done on time and it's not because we haven't
So it's not a cash flow, it's just a timing on getting them to pay it.
Yeah, it's just the the extra time that it takes.
For them to process.
To then actually get it processed sometimes, yeah.
Got it. Okay, so. Um, okay, so we need a motion to accept the credit card statement. Anybody wants to do that? Or I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the credit card statement.
I'll second that.
Um, any other discussion? Questions? Okay, let's come for the vote.
Susan Dominican, I.
Tricia, I'm there too, I.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackey, I.
So into three business, uh three point one contracts. So the first one is the data service agreement.
So we've had this contract now, we first year was eighteen, nineteen. We considered moving in another direction this year. Um, but for timing and other reasons, we weren't able to do it. We will continue to look at possible options, but at this point um we want, we need to stay with the BCOE.
Costs is similar with the last year, even inflation and all those other variables. Any other questions? Otherwise, we can vote to approve it or accept it. You need to send, right? So we need to approve it.
To assign it needs to go to the board.
Board, so.
Okay, so we need to
A motion to send it to the board for approval.
Okay.
Ready to make a motion?
What was the motion again?
Just send.
Send this to the board for approval.
I move that we send the data management contract to the board.
I'll second it. This is Tricia. Sounds good to me. Okay, it's all second. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, we can go ahead and vote.
Susan Dominican, I.
Tricia, I'm there too, I.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Hey, passes to go to the board and three point one point two behavioral specialists.
My family first. Yes, so this is again um a rollover. It's an annual contract. We were with behaviors, the family first for our um what's called a BCBA when a student needs that extra level of expertise to look at their their um behavior needs and um they were really happy with the work that um they did for us and about four on behavior plans with us this year and um for special ed students. Um, so we want to continue that service this next year.
Do they come onsite?
Yes, they come onsite, they observe in the classroom.
Okay.
And it's an as needed, so we call them and say we have a student, we look at them.
They're only paying as we're using.
Only when we use them.
Okay, so we need a motion to send this to the board for approval.
So I'll move that we um send the behavior specialist contract to the board for approval.
I can second it.
Perfect. Um, any other discussion or questions? Okay, then we can vote.
Susan Dominican, I.
Tricia, I'm there too, I.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Perfect. If we didn't know everybody's last names by the end of this, we would
I almost said Kate's name the last time.
Okay, um, so that passes. So moving to three point one point three E therapy.
So E therapy again, this is the second year we've worked with them. We started working with them in January of last year. Um, this year we, last year we used them for school psychologists as well as Ermes counseling. This year we're looking at only for counseling rehab. Jo Lynn is coming back to do our onsite um school psych work, so um, we have been happy with them. They've done a good job. It's just nice to have somebody
Yeah.
um, of her caliber here and on site for us, so um, again, this is a continuing contract and I'm excited to be looking at this and going, look, all four of these are contracts we've had before that we're just continuing.
Yeah.
That we're, you know, have building relationships, so.
Perfect. And I guess my same question, cost wise or on, and all of these are pretty similar to what they were.
Similar and again, changes. And this is another one that is just as needed. So when we assign the students, then they charge it and their their rates are reasonable.
Perfect. Okay, so we need a motion to send this to the board for approval as well. And so I'll make a motion to uh send the E therapy contract to the board for approval.
I will second that.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Hey, so we'll call for the vote.
Susan Dominican, I.
Tricia, I'm there too, I.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Perfect. And to three point one point four, the nursing MOU.
So um for the nurse, we have an MOU with uh uh Chico Country Day School. They officially hire our nurse. Um, Natalie will be continuing. We have her, the equivalent of twenty percent of her contract. Um, she is actually moving out of state this year and so will be doing the majority of work um online, but we, you know, we've looked at it. She's done an excellent job for us for a number of years. And so we're gonna give that a try. She's with us whether she's on campus or not. She's always answering questions, so. Um, she does a lot of her work um remotely anyways.
She's only here a couple of hours a week.
Yeah, she's like four hours, four hours on Mondays, I think.
Yeah, so yes. And when she's here, is she meeting like with people face to face where it's gonna make a big difference, you think?
Not to a great extent, you know, I mean, we always like to see happy faces, but and I don't think it will um. And she will be here for any kind of examinations, the eye examinations, things like that. She'll come, she'll come or someone will come onsite to do that work. So that's that's what we really need a nurse onsite for. And she has a good working relationship with Kayla or are um healthy, so.
Good.
We feel good about the service.
Okay, so we need a motion to send that to the board for approval as well. Um, anybody wanna make a motion?
I can make a motion to send the nursing MOU to the board for approval.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Perfect. Okay, um, any other discussion or questions? Okay, I'm called for the vote.
Susan Dominican, I.
Tricia, I'm there too, I.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Perfect. All right. Okay, so that takes us to three point two, school lunches. This one I found very interesting.
Little scary.
Well, we've been talking, I mean, we turned over service to them in um seventeen, eighteen, I think. So they've been doing less of service for a number of years. Um, and this has kind of been on the wind that they were kind of moving away from serving um the charter schools. They used to serve all of the charter schools. And they moved away like last year, the year before they stopped serving NORD. Um, partly because of where NORD is, those sorts of things have been happening. They've been struggling to staff this department. Um, they've been talking about it for a couple of years. So we moved into a joint relationship last year where they paid our staff to cover the lunch. Uh, you know, part of a uh sum of money to to cover us. Um, and so this this came, they reached out very kindly and respectfully met with Buck and Maggie um about helping us transition back to having our own um program. It fits into our goals of L cap goals of changing our lunches to be to look at more healthy options. Um, but we are also holding the line with first, we have to learn what we're doing before we start changing. So this next year, we're really focusing on what it's gonna take to do the paperwork and do the planning and and you know, how much um time we're gonna need in the kitchen, what's the increases there? But they did give us, um, and Maggie made uh did some notes. Do you have those notes? Yeah, so that talk about the costs. Um, and what with the average costs have been, and this is, this is just for Blue Oak. What they're looking at, so they're feeling it's gonna their assessment is that it will pay for itself and it should, so um yeah, so that's where.
And that still falls under the, like, the free lunch.
Services, so yeah, so we get funding in for that.
Okay, um, so we're not still having to charge.
No, we're still not statewide. They're just read a
Yeah.
The budget proposal for next year
Mm-hmm.
at the state is to include this at this point.
Okay.
You know, they could go through and slash in the next four weeks, but it doesn't look like they're going to.
They're talking about doing free for all again? Oh, okay, that's great. I didn't know that. I know they had talked about not doing that.
Yeah, so right now it's in, and according to my resources, it's in there as free for all stuff.
Okay, great.
So we'll be, this first year, we will be providing kind of exactly what Chico Unified was giving us.
Yeah.
And then we'll look to start.
We might start changing a few items. I had, when I went to the CCSA conference, there were a few providers that seemed like they had more healthy options, so it's like still a packaged breakfast bar, but it's a with less not processor.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, so it, so it's that sort of, you know, so that's what we'll start looking at is, can we within the budget um, can we in in increase the health options and help increase healthier, less sugary in our options? Um, and the balance is always things that the children will eat. We we want healthier, we also want them to actually eat food, so you know, that's that's the work, so. Feel like working for the first half of the year at least on just making sure we know what we're doing as far as producing lunches and then start moving into what we might be able to change. Or, you know, are there better vendors that we could use and stuff?
So then who will be responsible for kind of the day to day running of this program? Cause I know you have too much on your plate.
The kitchen is under butts to put.
Okay, so it'll be mostly
And we have a staff, you know, Gigi.
Yeah.
Our new staff member is is there already and doing great. And so, yeah, we'll be under his department. Um, and then um we will probably do half of the processing and the paperwork in the front office, so. Um, you'll see my adjustments to the front office later.
Mm-hmm. I'm excited to, that we'll have control over the numbers and like putting in all of that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's been an issue with
Yeah.
It's sending all of the new students to C U S C and then you don't do anything. And and it's like, my number's not working all year. I hear that. And I resend and resend and resend, so that'll be nice.
So having the national, yeah.
To control that piece of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. We're no longer a little piece of big pie around the pot and, you know, we do that well.
Yeah, so. Well, and I guess I, you know, I I lived through pre you know, pre-school district food at this school and but you know, we've, we've had a few wild rides and um so it was kind of it felt really good to kind of hand this over to Chico Unified because um there was so, so much going on with it, but um now that we have the bones that maybe we can build something more sustainable and um, yeah, less rocky.
Yeah, and and they've committed, Chico Unified has committed their staff to supporting us and taking this back over. It's not like here's the bucket.
Yeah.
Have a good time. They're, you know, saying, well, this is, this is how we order and these are our contacts and and this is who we work with and so starting with with their structure, then we can take over the structure and and adjust it as it works for us, so. And it's one of those, oh, okay, I guess we're doing this.
Yeah, yeah.
Things for me. Oh, all right, now is the time.
Yeah, and Buck felt, he's busy too. I mean, he feels like he can
He hasn't complained today.
Okay.
You're owing anybody else.
Well, you know, he, it's, he has a good staff.
Yeah.
And he has
Good.
Bob knows a lot about it. He has Mel who knows some, and now he has Gigi and so you know, his job is to make sure they do theirs, so.
Good.
Well, I think he's, he's, yeah. He seems fine with it.
Good. So we are making a motion to send this to the board for approval again?
Yes. So I move that we um we um send the board the action of taking over, beginning the work of taking over our own food uh service for next year.
I can second it.
Okay, perfect. Um, any other discussion or questions? Okay, we can vote.
Susan Dominican, I.
Tricia, I'm there too, I.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Perfect, passes. On to three point three uh meeting dates for the finance committee. We're just making sure these all work with the schedules and our big thing really important, not in any breaks. The March twelfth isn't a spring break? Doesn't usually fall on the seventeenth.
Oh, yeah. But is the seventeen?
I like people that jump check my work.
Seven.
Seventeen.
Yeah, it'll be a week. It'll be the next week, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause the seven, no, the seventeenth is that Friday of the, well, of the thirteenth.
So is that spring break?
Oh, Monday, wait.
No, we do.
There's, there wasn't the falls? Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not.
So it's the week after, that's that we have it off.
Spring break's a little bit later. I mean, even a smidge is quite nice.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Oh, you're Brazilian towns.
All right. And then this is adjusted for the beginning of the school year so that we can meet both the finance and the charter council the week before school starts. If we continue with the pattern that we have this year.
Hmm, okay.
But that's technically, we don't know until December. When we, when we approve the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, but if the pattern stays the same, then we will do the Monday, Tuesday. And then school will start the week after.
Got it. So that's why the the Mondays.
Yeah, got it.
When is the um August meeting? This August, what date is that?
It's the, it should be the regular pattern.
It's the week before school starts.
Yeah.
Right? No, I don't know. Yeah.
Sorry.
So it'll be eighth.
Oh, okay, I'll be in town.
Good.
And then we decide new members, right, for faculty and
Mm-hmm.
classified at our service.
Yes.
So would that be the last meeting that I would have to go to? Not that I haven't enjoyed everyone's company, but I'm also in school, so I'm struggling.
Yeah, yeah, so that, yeah, so that would be the last of this, this committee's meetings.
Let's say.
Membership.
Okay.
That's why the pattern is, it starts September and it ends August.
Got it, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Well, so why is the one in March on a Monday and not a Tuesday?
Oh, that was a typo.
Okay.
Cause the twelfth, we just looked at was Tuesday.
Yeah.
It's a typo.
Got it.
Change that.
Um, okay, so we need a motion to send us to the, no, that is just to approve it.
This, oh, that, yeah, this is right, yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody else needs to approve it.
I can make a motion to approve next year's um finance committee meeting dates.
I'll second that.
Um, we'll go for a vote.
Susan Dominican, I.
Tricia, I'm there too, I.
Kate McDonald, I. Kelly Mackey, I.
Okay. Line right through. Okay, um, three point four, L cap review. And Susan is not gonna go line by line.
Yes, and I said that we, the, for this purpose, the um L cap, if you looked at it um is part of the budget process really for this committee. So I'll talk about new um actual items and and so forth of the the charter council, but this was just for you to look at the budget items and see if you have any questions um or concerns that need to be brought up to the to the committee or the council.
Does anybody have any question on it or? There was no big difference.
There really were, the the, they're in the difference between the budget and the um, the actuals was teacher salary, so it wasn't anything
Yeah.
surprising or out of line or anything, and that doesn't even really show up much in the actual goals, so.
Hmm. If nobody has any questions, um, we need to send this to the board for review and approval, right?
Right.
So. I can make a motion to send the L cap to the board to review and approve. Anybody wants to second my motion?
I can second.
Yeah. Okay, so first in a second. Any other discussion or questions? If we, let's go and vote.
Susan Dominican, I.
Tricia, I'm there too, I.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Okay, three point five, school budget.
All right, Jim, you're on for this one.
Would you prefer to share, Jim?
I wanna hear your voice now.
No, this is fine. Uh, thank you. Um yeah, so, so here we go with uh twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, I mean, I think the big, we we've talked a lot all year about how things were going this year, how the funding's changing. What does this mean going forward, right? And, no, to be fair, this is the budget you approve in June because it has to be approved in June. Right? You can come forward, August, revise with what you know. Um, the big way I look at this is you can think of the different programs that Blue Oak is taking on that are either new or they're expanded. So changing how you're gonna do food, changing how you're gonna do extended day, you know, looking at these different categories, right? Um, I would view each of them as they're going to fund themselves. So we could talk, we could strip them out of this budget. And it would take me a little bit of work, but ultimately they should be offset. So I look at the budget and I see um four point two in revenue, but some of that is related to extended day. So probably closer to four million in revenue, but at the same time, we would adjust that expense. Um at the two sixty-two enrollment that we're using today. The good news is this first draft budget balances, but it shows the challenges to Blue Oak that if you're at two sixty-two, um, it's really you know, it's break even. It's basically break even. And in the future year, the two future years that we include when we do budget, those are just projections showing that the school isn't adopting a budget and then it's gonna like collapse next year. Um, but looking at those though, we had to say, well, you know, the younger grades are getting larger. I need to see that expanding through the school each year in order for this model to continue to balance. Now, that doesn't mean you have to adopt that budget next year. But just right now, as the placeholder, if this year was two sixty-two, the flow through of this, the student growth pushed it to like twelve more students next year. And that was essentially necessary because you're gonna see a decline in some of the one-time revenue next year. And so it's just noteworthy that it's a good budget opening. Um, but we just have to consider, we're looking at about a four million, four point two million dollar operating budget right now, and at that level the two sixty-two and the ADA that goes with that is kind of the minimum. And so the school can plan with that, but you've gotta be looking to, either this is growing without a lot of expense growth or there's gonna be some expense reduction somewhere. Not counting like if food, extended day, whatever it is, covers itself, like we can boost it to a four point four million dollar budget if that's all covered by new revenue. If that makes sense, so that that kind of obscures it. Um, it's a bigger picture. We're looking at about a four point two, four point two at this level. That's solid, but not entirely comfortable if anything were to go wrong. So we just wanna continue to watch that um for stability going forward because the school Because the school doesn't have as significant a fund balance, probably entering the year, our current projection. Was about nineteen percent. Good number, but not a number that can take on, you know, multiple years of concern. So you do have stability coming into the year, but it can't pick up losing years. You can only pick up like one use, losing year at that. I'll, I'll pause there.
Can you roll it down to show the expenses? That.
Now, there's expense growth like we mentioned because we're incorporating assumptions about extended day. But those are all fully covered with new revenue.
So most of these are just increased from. Last year or current year based on a percentage for. Right? I mean, because it looks pretty.
Right.
Similar across the board.
Yeah, it, um, we have not, we're not increasing staffing other than um. With the extended day which he's talking about and then the um. By October, you'll see the um, the community school planning grant probably, and but. This is just like people getting raises, you know, annual.
Yeah, and so kind of the review, like the good news is I feel like it's solid today. But if you think of. Going back three years, right, enrollment would have been much higher. And so that's kind of the challenge that if, if the school is settling in. To a two sixty two, two seventy. This is as high as the cost can go, and it might be a concern, but if the school is rebounding towards three hundred. Um, then you're looking at that model of like, okay, we're building towards three hundred. Here's our plan. On how we're going to get there and what that looks like, and you feel more comfortable about the services you can provide, so. Um, I was happy that this one balanced with what's concluded. We just got it. That'll be the message all year. It would be like, you know, how do we feel about the enrollment? How do we feel about the services at this level? And um. You know, how do we feel about the sustainability of that going forward?
What was enrollment this year?
Yeah, at the beginning, like.
I know it moved around a little.
Yeah. Maybe around two fifty five?
And what are we projecting for next year?
I think that's the, the projection was two sixty.
Two sixty.
You know, and again, we have, we have space for three hundred, so it just means there are some gaps in some of the classes.
And our biggest gaps are. Like six, seven, eight, like usually, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure six this year is. Um, I'm not sure. Right, off the top of my head right now.
So, yeah. Because the lower grades, I mean, I know, like, first we had a big waiting, waiting list and.
We don't this year, there's grades kind of small, so it was, it was. It's one of those things that's hard. We, for the last two years coming through COVID, we've had. A lot of new students applying for first grade and that just didn't happen this year. So it's like, okay, are we back to supplying our kindergarten and, and, you know, supplying through the kindergarten and? What does that mean? So we have continued to work on attempting to build a third. Kindergarten class, it's harder than.
We've stayed at about ten for the waitlist for.
At this point.
At this point for kindergarten, yeah, it's been maintaining around ten.
Yeah, and a lot of that depends on what their ages are, whether who's. TK.
Because we don't get.
Yeah.
Paid ADA, right, for TK?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, we do, is it?
So that, and, and at some point, we're going to have to deal with TK. And. Only one kindergarten year, because at this point, the state is not paying two K, TK and two kindergarteners.
Yeah, uh, when the age goes down, you mean?
Yeah.
So it's not really an issue yet for that.
We're still two years out.
Yeah. We're, yeah, still two years out, but and um, the other thing that came up. Is our need, um, need to go to the CHICO Unified Board and change our. Process for kindergarten lottery, so we say first, like we say, um. Siblings have already enrolled students, we need to also say. Kindergarteners first and then TK for a slot, so we're making sure that we're um filling our first grade slots and not. Having TK offset our kindergarten, so. So that's another thing.
So do anybody that's kindergarten first and then.
Right, and then TK. TK's are second rather than, yeah, than the other.
That makes sense.
Instead of mixing it, so that's something that's come up that I'll go to the board, um. And the, the CHICO board with, for continuing our marketing, um, as we look for a new site. Um, those who are helping us get the new site are also talking about helping us with the marketing plan, so. When we're saying, hey, we're going to move into this new site to be able to. To market for that as well. And I am planning that, I'm also talking to somebody about starting the preschool program, so. But again, as, as Jim says, the preschool program has to pay for itself, so that's, no, we can't, you know, support that, so. Those are all the things.
Are we looking at sports at all for upper grades? Because I know that's a thing, saying.
Yeah, I think it's, it's some, yeah, that's as part of the, didn't come up in our survey for. After-school programs, but we do have. We applied for Aces this year, we didn't get it, that's the, the um after-school funding specifically for middle school, so we'll. Um, work on that application again next year. Sometimes you just learn from the first one and get it second time. Um, and then we have the, the expanded learning, so that the expanded learning is focusing on. At least an hour of clubs every day after school and then the Thursday care. Thursday afternoon care, so that's our focus this year. Once you go, it's good. We haven't had, hey, let's do. Haven't had any kids come to us at this point, like we want to do sports, so it's, we kind of went through that in the past where we had a lot of kids, oh, let's do sports. I don't know if they just like, or, oh, well, we're not going to do that, or. You know, and leaving or, you know, or what the issue is, but we're ready to do sports, I think. Um, the idea of. Having a club for card. Makes a lot of sense so that we have like basketball coach here and they can be a part of the, the card. Clubs.
Like it's, yeah, like if you did a sports club one day a week and they rotated through different.
Something like that, so, yeah, so it's on the list, but first on the list are. Handwork, yeah, homework. Games, you know, they're not necessarily. That's not what's come up is what the community wants. But we may not have asked most, just directly as we should have to. Like, do we have enough kids? For that program, so. I know Nick has said he's willing to do that, so. This is also doing homework club, I don't know how much.
So are we ta, I have a, a few thoughts, but I don't know if this is the right place. Are we talking more about sustainable school? Like design in that, in that section, or is this more of a discussion like the sustainable school as far as like? Maybe different stuff at, so like middle school, like the feedback I've heard from people is. With only having one class, the specialization is the biggest concern for people that I've known that have left. So like doing more. With like seventh and eighth doing more together, or sixth and seventh doing more together, or. You know, doing more things, so there's, they're not just with their class, which is a great thing, but then it's also. You know, it's a mixed bag, yeah, so we have done a lot of, and that's probably not for here. Yeah, that's a discussion for later, so that's why.
Making Jim look, okay, on the, on the camera and.
So any other questions on the budget for twenty three, twenty four?
Hey, could I add one more area? If we, if we roll to the end. And. It's, it's imperfect, yeah, if you go to the cash at the end. This is just, this is just planting the note for the future. The state has front-loaded multi-year, many multi-year grants, which has been great. Because if you recall a year ago, we had cash concerns, so it's stabilized cash. The problem with that is. We've now got funding that we're going to use for the next three years. We've already got the cash today. So if a school balances its budget over the next three years. We're actually going to lose cash over that timeline because we've in fronted that cash three years in advance. This is an imperfect calculation, just trying to roughly be at like about how much cash would we decline each year? But it caught my eye and alarmed me. That we were balancing the budget each year and yet our cash at this level was continuing to drop. Uh, we're looking at this model is in the range of a little over four hundred thousand or something like that, so. That's imperfect, actual results will be different. But it's a warning that. We're artificially high in cash today. We've been advanced for three years or something like that. And so if our operating results are just break even. Cash is going to drop every year. To the point where we might have had a good bus, or, or a, a solid budget, a passable budget. And now we're back to cash worries. Where we no longer have any surplus. Multiple years from now, but we want to take that into consideration as we think about. What does, what does the enrollment, it's not just the enrollment trend in terms of surplus and. You know, I'm telling you, you have a nineteen percent, so as long as you maintain that, you're okay. That cash is going to decline below that level as we go, so just future thinking.
Um, I have a question, Jim, so, but the cash that we were given was intended to be used over the next three years, right? It wasn't like a reimbursement from the years prior.
Yeah, and that's the good news. It's just, the, the great news is that, like. Roughly today, you have roughly, you know, nine hundred thousand. But. If, instead of going, normally I talk about how you collect your AR and your cash is going to increase. We've entered this reverse that we haven't had, where we've been front-loaded for three years. And so that eight hundred is going to deplete. And, and we'll be talking about, we'll, we'll be um. At the whim of AR again, like right now, we're not worried about how much AR is outstanding at June thirtieth because we've got multi-year grants covering that. But as those multi-year grants go away. We're now, you know. Sixty days behind on cash or whatever we are on AR without that, that cushion. It's not going to. Be a negative impact this year, this upcoming year, it's not going to be a negative impact the year after that. But, but as we look at where the school is headed. It's just another kind of reminder, warning that if, if, uh, if the economic environment gets flatter. The school is fortunate to have a safety, you know, safety now. But that, we're going to wear away at that and that, that won't be there. Future planning will be living in the current year. The current AR environment like we used to be in twenty twenty. Where, where we were in twenty nineteen, where. We had the concern of if they are slow, this is really impacting our ability to manage cash at any given time in the year.
And I don't know, so one more, like as we go into looking for a new school site, right? And that's a huge part of where our money goes every month, um, so our goal is, right, to have that be less. And ho, hope balance our budget. By the time we get through these three years, we're going to be. Cash flow issues, um, you're looking at that as well, Jim, kind of like the cost of the building and. The old building and the old ACs and all of that that goes with it.
Yeah, and it'll be, it'll be a trade-off of.
Yeah.
What is the new building cost? Does the new building lead to better enrollment? Right, you know, I know that's, that's, that can be wishful thinking when we're, when we're negotiating with a, a financier, like we don't want to overpromise.
Yeah.
But that's the hope, right? A new building or, or, or a. Settled budget, like this is what the enrollment is at the new building, so we know this is what we should be able to get, this is what our budget should be. We can meet that and, and whatever that new facility finance looks like. Um, it will bring financial covenants with it. They, whoever finances it will say. You need to have this much cash. You need to have this kind of an operating surplus every year. Um, so. At least this budget includes the slightly increased rents that we currently have, so rent's now a little higher than it used to be. It's projected to go about three percent a year in this model, so we have factored that in. Um, we're not factoring in a new building because we don't know what that would look like yet.
Well, and at least here as for another two years, right? Thank you.
Oh, Jim, I think I have a question. It might be a stupid one, but um. Uh, I know this past year, this past budget. Um, we went over, right? We've used quite a lot of uh one-time funding to kind of help us get through this year. And now we're looking at a budget of like four point two, which is higher than we were last year. So my question is, like, where is this extra funding coming from? Because our ADA hasn't changed that much. Um, is it more one-time funding or is it? What?
Yeah, yeah, I really, thi, this is, this is, let's see. We're hoping eighty, we're hoping ADA goes higher because last year was such a bad ADA environment. So the year that we're ending. The attendance rate. Dipped in the range of ninety one, ninety percent. And I really hope that doesn't return, you know, you weren't alone. It happened all over and it was really damaging to charter schools, you know, who are used to operating at least at ninety three. Um, sounds like a small number, but for every hundred, right, that's adding up into tens of thousands. Uh, for every ADA, so we're hoping to get to. An ADA of two forty three at a similar, slightly, you know, a similar enrollment. Compared to last year, we had a funded ADA of, I want to say two thirty four. Um, two thirty four, yeah, in the range of, in the range of two thirty four. The other is what makes the budget hard to look at is the growth of the other programs that fund themselves. Um, I think if I just do a quick view. I, I, I want, I, I want to say we're in the range of two hundred thousand plus community schools, so it might be three hundred. So, so this is probably a. Three point nine. And then you start adding other programs that pay for themselves, so they're great because they boost the school, they add all kinds of supports. And they also pay for themselves, but it creates a um. Stretch when you go like gross budget to gross budget, you have to kind of analyze, well. One thing that was very different is we have an entirely new program with its own revenue. Um, so this is kind of a, a, a restabilization towards three point nine. But it's dependent on the ADA coming in at a more. Reasonable rates, which I think will happen. But you can see where there is no room here either, though, right? So we like to think that a two forty three, call it two forty four ADA is reasonable. As long as we can achieve that, the school can operate at this level. If we start experiencing risks to that ADA. We're entering that environment again. Where um, we're looking at, a, and, sorry, and we still have. About a hundred and thirty in funding that's not going to repeat. So used a lot of the one-time now, saved a hundred and thirty of it for next year. Um, that's why the budget had to assume that the second year out, the school would go up twelve more students. If the younger grades were full. And then stay moving up each year, just gradual natural growth. Restoring the natural level for the school to grow at that expensive level.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions for Jim on the budget? Hey, so we're gonna. Recommend this goes to the board for approval.
I will move to recommend that the budget. Goes to the board for approval.
I'll second it. Any other discussion or questions?
Susan, Dominican, I.
Trisha, are there two I?
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, okay, so three point six executive director report. Very fitting, very summary.
Um, okay, so, uh. Just general things going on, staffing reports became a regular part of my report. Um, we, Susan. Little C announced us now, so she was retiring. It was not, it was very much the end of the year. Sheila Moss immediately came back to me and said, I don't want to go back. I hate leaving my class, but it's her first love, so she went there. We did, um, we have offered. Um, interviewed and offered the position to a, a new second grade teacher. Um, really excited about her and she has acceptance, so we're in the process of getting her signature on a contract right now. Um, so feeling really good about that. Um, we have. A new counselor, um. Ashley Angel is her name and a new Spanish teacher. Um, Jepa Cole, um, so those positions are filled, so the only things we're. Um, Jepa Cole, um, so those positions are filled. So the only things we're looking at now is replacing. Two aid positions, um, which uh and we're looking for aides who. Uh, are stronger in the upper grades for the more advanced math and things like that. We have a great number of. First kindergarten, first grade aides, second and third grade also, but we need to to make sure we have that focus. So that's um. The main thing that we are hiring for now.
Um, that is good work.
It's exciting. There's so many things, you know, this year. And I feel like it's June and there's. Two or three months ahead where we have been. So it just feels like, oh, okay. This is what rhythm can do for us. Okay, um, the year our year-end staff, um, three of them here in the room. Um, continue to work on completing the tasks and and getting ready for twenty-three, twenty-four. So um, that's good. We have summer school set up with um from July first to August. E- July thirty-first, excuse me, to August eleventh. We are right now, as of like an hour ago, looking for a second teacher. We now, right now only have one. So Amanda and I will be working on that. Just um. The self, which is our excess li- liability fund, went up substantially, I think eighteen dollars per ADA. This year, so like from forty-four to sixty-two. Um, we have been expecting that for a while. This is a reflection of. The um. The ability for those who have been sexually abused to go back. That the uh statute limitations went away. So that's, I've been talking about this actually for three years. So. Um, self has done a good job of continuing to manage it, but this year it hit. So um. That's, and that's most of the report. The other things I can say is. The ERC, which is funding for um staffing during the um. During COVID and holding on to staff during that COVID, we're at the end of that process. It looks like we will qualify. Don't know how much, but that will be nice for. Jim's concerns about um. Our cash funds, because that can go right into that um percentage. Uh, to help our cash but class cash flow balance. Um, yeah, and so we're just plugging along, getting things done.
Anybody have any questions for Susan? So we'll go into um item four, four point one. Uh, the organization of support staff. Right, so um. We've had a number of staff tell us they're moving on. Um.
Alex being one of them, we've been expecting him. I knew she was going to go back to school when I heard her. So. Um, so in doing that, it's always to me an opportunity to really look at how we're organized and see if there's better things we could do. So um. So here's some of the considerations and things as we were looking at staff changes both at the beginning of the year, this year and now at the end of this year. Um, what we um are looking at doing. So um, you know, increasing marketing, looking at expanded learning, how are we going to support that? Um, the board has asked me, the council has asked me to. Do more engagement of the community as a whole and advocate more with the charter. In charter world, so I'm doing more of that. So the need to move out of the day-to-day. Um, universal design for true support of the universal site for. Learning and so on. So if you roll down to the next, next, I can talk about the changes. So these are some of the things we've looked at. Because of those um. Um, I have taken over directly over the special education. Um, program instead of having a second administrator doing that. Um, I'm going to training this summer in July um to get more information and knowledge on that. Um, that has allowed us to move a focus for special education. Um, into the classrooms more. So the teachers are getting better connected with their their um special education supports. I'm glad with that. Um, uh. Amanda Heard has come on as an interim assistant director. We weren't sure what we were going to do this year, so it was a part-time. Part-time, part a year thing, but um. She will be available for at least another year. Um, so moving her in and allowing us, as Jim was saying, allowing us. The need is there to focus on our attendance and focus on behavior and have her available for the day-to-day work. So I can do some of the other stuff. Um, and that over the last few months has seemed to work really well. So we're going to continue on with that. Um. Looking at combining the executive assistant and the H human resources. Um, position um. So that there, so that all of the HR work and the confidential work is on one desk. And then the office manager um will become more of a. A um. The detailed numbers. Person that does all of the, um, in, you know, keeps track of inventory, keeps track of the payroll, payroll stuff. And then we have, and so it splits that position. Um. Um, and then eliminating the wellness coordinator position as a position, a lot of that flows into the assistant director position. And then um create, establish a new position. Um, to support volunteers' behavior in social media. So that person will be more on the desk. Um, the person now, the attendance person will be able to move off the desk more, which will be helpful in her work. And then she will also be able to support behavior needs, being that floating person that goes around and. Helps us find children and they decide to leave their classroom without telling us whether they're going. So she'll be able to do more of that. So. Those are the the, uh, I don't, looking at the budget as it's. It's hard to be as detailed as I like to be. So sometimes I just have to breathe and say, okay, overall, this will not be an increase in the expenses. Um, I anticipate it might be a decrease. Um, but we're not see, it's not going to be a major change to the actual budget. Um, overall budget. Hmm. And I think it will move us better towards our goals. We've established a haircut. Go, I have a question.
Elimination of the wellness coordinator position. That's big and scary for a teacher. Um, so I know, you know, Amber was always everywhere and always very available to help the children. Um, and also coordinated our interns.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I I guess I wonder with that not existing, but then. What does that look like? Like, is that it? If we're asking. Um, Amanda to be picking up that. In addition to what Amanda's already doing.
Well, so the majority of what Amber always did was a level three. She's no longer doing level three.
Mm-hmm.
So and the coordinator of the wellness room is really something that can easily go onto administrator's job. So it's, so um. So there's, so there's that. That's really her focus is the behavior. And we've seen a significant um improvement in behavior in the upper grades with her coming in. With a higher level of authority to deal with kids and put them on plans and so forth. So we've seen some really good stuff happening there.
Okay.
Um, and then to give her a second support person so that that um. That availability, so again. Having Am- Amber for years was the only person available to go into classrooms. So now we'll have to. So that increases um the ability to do both. The higher level work that she's doing and really making um behavior plans and and behavior contracts work.
Uh-huh.
And then uh also still have just that, hey, can you go find, hey, so-and-so is. We're not, we don't know where this student is. We need to go find them or so-and-so is crying in the hallway. Can you go? Talk to them. So we'll still have that available ability for the lower grades is where that. Happens the most.
And who's going to be doing that part?
Um, that'll be Kelly Chapman.
Okay.
Okay. And then who will be at the front desk when Kelly's?
The new person that we hired yet.
Okay, so, okay.
So it's sort of an adjustment of the um.
I guess where I see like as a teacher, that role, the wellness coordinator role was um. It was kind of, it was an interesting position where, you know, there were some children who. Didn't get what they needed from the wellness room. And there was, you know, and the school counselor could only see them three times. And um, and there's only so much we can do while we're trying to hold a classroom and teach the children. And so the wellness coordinator kind of really filled a hole there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you know, I think. You know, and even in just discussing children, it was like, okay, well, they don't need a behavior plan yet. But like where, what is our next kind of steps in going there? And so. You know, I I worry that that is no longer going to exist for us. Um, because it was a huge help and support for those children somewhere in the middle because there's, you know, we have the kids who never misbehave. Or rarely ever. And then we have the kids who need a little bit of help or getting back into regulation help. And then we have like this, this group that they're, they're not behavior contract kids. They're not, you know, but there, you know, there's a need that a school counselor can't bear.
So I do see between Kelly and Amanda that.
They'll be able to do it.
Yeah, and um my, my. The other side of that is that Amanda, when we talked to her, because she has. Um, a lot of good, strong classroom experience, where she's been a teacher in a number of district of district, this. Different places, different districts, but that was hard for me to get out. Um, that I, that I feel like the support may be more targeted to what teachers need.
Mm-hmm.
By having that and then still having that um classified person in Kelly. That can help in the emergency, kind of, like I said, somebody's, what what's going on with this student? Who is now where they're supposed to be or getting upset. Kelly is basketball coach. She'd be good with.
Well, she's amazing.
The older children, she's good with the younger children. She has good relationships with them already. So I'm feeling like.
Okay.
That's a good move for her as well as the school. So, yeah, it, that's a hard, it's a hard one.
It's a hard one.
It's also true that I'm not sure that um. Amber in the person that she has is, there's another one out there. I'm not really sure there is. So. Um, and and the other thing we're talking about as far as. Um, is working with Sarah Eblin on some social emotional learning stuff, especially I think first year for the. For the upper grades, but and that's an area of expertise for hers that we haven't tapped.
Yeah.
Yet. So, so um, yeah, it's a little scary.
Yeah.
But it is, I think, a good change for the school as a whole. So, yeah.
Will we still have interns? Sorry.
No, you're good. Uh, we intend to. Last year was unusual in that we had so many.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm so, I'm not going to think, oh, yeah, we're going to get fixed again. That's going to work out. But um, we definitely, we're already interviewing ones that are.
Oh, great.
And Amanda's going to take that off, but.
Yeah, I would echo your concern on the wellness room, just because. I would say my children are, don't misbehave a lot, but they they still would go and maybe because they just loved Amber. As a check-in sometimes, right? Maybe they're just having an emotional day or.
Yeah.
And they would go and it takes it off the teacher that's trying to. Teach, actually, yeah, yeah, right. And so it's like who's, and if Kelly is going to be able to do that, then, you know.
Well, the wellness room is essentially been done by interns and by aides. It hasn't been, Amber has not been in the wellness room. Um, this year.
Okay.
Um, she set up interns and supported them, but she hasn't been in there regularly. And.
And a lot of those kids came to uh rest and recovery.
Yeah, they come to rest and recovery also. We still have that.
They saw us.
Yeah.
Kayla and I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Kelly.
Yeah.
Yeah. My highly needy children. They're regulars.
I think that you will have all the services that you have had in. A little more spread out maybe and um just a different way.
Yeah. Well, we'll need to reassure the teachers.
Yeah. Yeah, I think my opinion at like third, fourth, fifth, like, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of emotions.
Okay, my second question was up above, I think it was number two, about UDL. Um, I I see that we're talking about adopting it. I don't know if that's something that there's going to be training in or because I know it's not something we could just jump into. We've had, you know, a presentation by Sarah. Uh, but that doesn't UDL make. Um, so I'm just curious what that adoption of UDL is really going to look like.
Well, it it's starting with, and you've already seen what we're doing with um the special education. Having two special education teachers and their engagement with um. Setting up plans for their students and working more directly with. Um, the teachers and being more available for that. And I think that's really the first step.
Okay.
Um, we, as a Waldorf school, UDL is what you do. It's that idea of. Everybody belongs in their community and you don't take them out of the community a lot. You really work on keeping them within the community.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the basis of UDL. And so it's a Waldorf principle, really. So I haven't really thought about it as. An additional adoption, but it is the way we're going with education is that. Um, all children deserve to be served in the least restrictive environment. And that's what UDL is. Um, what we have and what is in the LCAP this year is to really work also on the extension, which is more advanced students. Because we have focused more on special education rather than students that um need that extra. You know, challenge. Um, and those students are often also that we don't realize that they're also often the behavior issues because they're bored. And so that's the other piece of it right now, the focus that we've had though. Um, will be on continuing to work on. And that's why this is here, the, the um. When um as Rachel was leaving and we had discussions about that, it was just clear. That we were struggling with having um. Two different plans for a child with what in, that was mostly in the general education teacher's class. And then we have. A plan for that student and that didn't often fit with what the teacher was trying to do. That communication was weak. And so that's. That's what that is actually about is the fact that we've. Moved. And so I was thinking, when I said that, I was thinking in terms of special education.
Okay.
Because it's um, because keeping that under one hat rather than having two hats for it. I've seen a better planning going on as I sit in, planning uh meetings for IEPs. It's like I can hear the conversation is improving.
It's nice having those meetings.
Yeah. So, you know, so that's, so that's that. That's why I said, no, I'm, I'm not going to hire a new special ed director as a second. I'm going to. Have somebody focus on the general education needs and I will. Put that under one umbrella for special education.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
What training are you going to this summer?
Um, it's leadership, special education leadership from um, yeah, um, Eldorado, uh, in July. So it's the intensive leadership.
Okay.
Any other questions on the reorganization? Thank you. And so four point two new facility report.
So um. We kept talking about the one site that we had seed and really been excited about, but it, it, I continued to get conflict. All the way into February, the March about that site and just. Really the sense that it was the right direction for our community as a whole. So I let the board know that I was kind of dropping that one. Um. And the size of the property was tight when we really looked at designing the building, two point three acres. Didn't, and we, you know, we were trying to figure out how to have a uh kindergarten play yard that was anything like. Even, you know, half of what we have now and like that's, so. Um, we are working, so we are now working with our um real estate. People and I'm trying, um, the, we had four percent potential sites. We're, two of them look really good. Um, so we're looking at that um. Turn to impact, let me know that they're leaving the charter school building arena. So we now are interviewing other potential partners to fill that role. I had an interview last week. I have another one next week and a third one. On the, but in the future, uh, that hasn't been set up yet. So that will be coming um to this committee and to. The board when we get ready to choose a new partner. And then I am drafting a letter to Chico Unified um to ask that we be included in the facilities planning process. As a sort. To ask that we be included in the facilities planning process as a sort of um. To see if they have property available for us to use. They are talking about things like closing Hooker Oak so that they can. Use it for um moving schools there while they're building other things. And it's like, well, then that site must be available if you don't need it. So it's sort of a, it's, it's time for us to, to step up and then do probably um October for the November deadline. The Prop thirty nine, which is the legal request. Um, we've done that before. It's never been very um. Satisfactory in the sites, but now that they're in the middle of this facilities planning and they're seeing reduced numbers, there may be. Um, a more um significant site for us. And so we're now looking at the move is planned for twenty twenty five, July of twenty twenty five.
Has Hooker up decided there? Or have they decided about Grove yet or not? They're still, yeah.
I think they're gonna leave Hooker up there because the parents, I mean. It's the, they tried to kind of do it under the table and of course the parents are like, what? So now they're. They're trying to s- satisfy the parents again, so. But um, it's clear from that that they have space for us. You know, so there we go. And they wanted to move. Inspire there and of course Inspire is bigger than we are. So how could they?
Yeah.
And that's one, you know, the politics come in and.
There's so many elementary schools in Chico.
Yeah, um, I was, you know, I was pleased with the discussion um at the. Chico Unified Board, um Inspire, the night that we were there with our um annual reports as charter schools. Um, Inspire was also there going, you know, hey, find us a place. We need a place. We got eight million waiting for you to find us a place. And um, there was a lot of, you know, talk at the board level about. Seeing charter school students as ours and not, you know, so. You know, there's some political stuff there, but it was definitely a different. Sort of um conversation than. You're taking our students away. It was really much more inclusive and more understanding of what churches do, so. So this may be the time.
Okay, work to be done.
On to four point three, unless there's any other questions? Uh, expanded learning program.
Expanded learning, um, yeah, whatever it is. So, uh, expanded learning is uh one of the grants that Jim was talking about, um, that it requires. When it came down, it requires us to add an additional thirty days to get on our regular schedule. And I will tell you that this was a relief for me because initially they were like. A lot more than that. So this is um, so they, we got it to a point of like a cut and dry, so we could do that. Um, our summer school will be ten days. We're looking at a, a summer camp in June, so. Rather than doing a really long summer school, we'll do a camp in June and then a, and our summer school continues. That is work we've done a two week summer school in late July, early August for the last two years, and it does feel. Good for both staff and for students to have that. That being coming back early rather than leaving later. So then the other ten, then there are ten days during the school year that will be. Needing to have um services available, really excited about having it for the conferences and in-service days and. And teacher work days because those are days that are off. Set, so I looked at days that. Primarily at days where we don't have school that the district does, so balancing that and then the spring break. As the other five days because I had to pick them somewhere, so that's where they are.
Who's gonna be here for spring break?
That is part of, it's part of the planning process. We'll put it out there. Who wants to do that? Okay, not Kelly. I'm not excited about either, but it was either that or, or. Splitting up Thanksgiving and I'm like. This'll be fine, it'll be clean. It's one week, five days.
Does one person in the office have to be here? Is that what?
We will need some level of service in the office, yeah. She's already putting her butt in sun. So and then we'll get a little more, these are the estimating, and again, estimates, but estimated cost based on our. Um, our summer school program. So, and that comes under budget, gives us a little more room for things like. Supplies, somebody asking for supplies for. Just recently, can we pay this out of that? I'm like, yeah, we can't. So. Anyway, as you can see, summer school, the morning drop off will start at seven fifteen. Um, covered by aid staff rather than teaching staff, they'll be happy with that. They are happy with that. At increasing the after school program until four fifteen, the nine hour day is for current, is what's required for the grant. Um, the thirty, the thirty additional days in the nine hour day. And so that the, when uh Riley did some work on surveying. Um, the morning drop off was what was requested. And then an hour after school, so that was based on the community survey that we did. So that's, um, and that, the Thursday care is one that, you know, was, has been talked about a lot as a need, so I'm looking forward to seeing.
Great.
How that helps and that it, and it's, this is the sort of thing that we see is hopefully supporting our um enrollment also. If we're not said making parents can pick up their kids on Thursday afternoons, they have that free care that might be helpful in our.
And then that line with Amanda Heard at the bottom, why is, is that for her supporting?
So it's part of the grant. So we get to offset that.
Which helps our budget as Jim was talking about, yeah.
Anything, any questions on expanded learning? So we'll go to four point four. California Community School Grant.
So, and I don't have anything for you to read on this one, California Community School Grant. I'm going to. A conference in San Francisco on Friday, um, where it, it is bringing us some really awesome new um. Connections and supports. And so I'll have, in, in, it's a hundred eighty thousand or so. Um, there is money for um indirect costs that you, we've never done before, but that means there's a percentage that goes. To supporting the office staff, so that's nice. Um, and I'm also looking at the new position. Um, and the data work that we want to do to be connected to the grants as well, because it's part of that grant process. It's not just. The resources that we can bring directly to students. But how we ensure we're met, measuring that well and. Implementing good programs and how we're measuring it. So I'm excited to be able to have that focus. Um, happen with some real training on what kind of data we need and. And what we need to report out, so.
That's a brief one now.
I'll have more information next.
Um, any questions? So my only thought, just on the sustainable school part is. I, the chatter I hear in the halls is middle school, right? Which our numbers have shown, we get a decrease in those years. So I don't know if there's like a. Focus group or a collaboration we can get with like some parents that are having concerns moving into middle school or. And I'm happy to pull people that have bent my ear and say, now you. Just with, you know, ideas or changes of, you know. Discooperation.
Yeah, definitely. Um, we have done a lot of work and um. The socialization aspect, but when we really came down what we. We realized that we actually already do it. And so it's not, it's sort of that idea that there's an isolation. Yeah, they're in the same class, but with specialties. Teachers that, you know, there is a.
And I don't have any kids in this grade yet. So when they go to specialties, does it, is it like? Combination of like sixth, seventh and eighth graders in that.
It's, it's seventh and eighth. We primarily focusing that next year around music, Spanish and um handwork.
So it's not just the whole eighth grade goes.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so that's a, part of it is maybe communication about what we're actually doing. We do. The fifth grade night, but you know, maybe people aren't understand, it's like.
Like the, to explain what middle school's about. That we need to do a better job of having a night, a middle school night. But, and I'm not, I haven't been there yet, so like, I don't know, so I don't, I don't have a response.
Yeah, so, and what I'm finding, and I think part of it is coming out of COVID, but I'm, I'm finding that. The communication hasn't been really school wide. I think maybe parents are talking. Enough to each other. I don't know, you know, whereas before people were talking to each other more, now they're not. And so. You know, how do we increase the communication about what really is happening, happening? Um, in middle school, if that's.
Why don't you ask someone who knows?
I think that would be great, uh, can differently do a collaborate. I would like to, just to do some work on communication as well as on middle school. And, yeah, so I think that's a good. Good plan. I know I, I uh realized. Halfway through this year that I haven't done a community coffee for three years. I used to do coffee with the principal. Three, at least three times a year, I haven't done one.
Yeah, that's since we came back.
No, that's, we came back, I'm like, oh, okay, there, you know, so there. Things that have just fallen off that we need to bring back. Again, part of the reorganization, this for me to be able to do that. Work with, more work with parents.
I do miss that, as my kids are getting older and I'm not having to be like. Pick them up at their door. Like I miss then seeing the parents and that, and the conversation, that conversation, right? Like I do miss that part of it, but my kids don't want me to.
That's part of the maturing of children.
So, yeah, so finding another way to be able to still do that, yeah, and have it. Yeah, at least now I have a first grader coming in, so I get to come back in the hallway, you know.
I'll pick you up on the side of the. But um, like, thinking too about just the communication piece about the middle school. If, you know, like, we do incredible things in the middle school that we don't really talk about. You know, like, we know it, or I know it because I've lived it, you know, like our roaring car boys and our sciences and. You know, we do some pretty spectacular things and like, how do we? Find ways to like bring that to the parents so they can start talking in the lower grades about like, oh, what we get. What, what are we looking forward to when we get to that, you know? So instead of the talk about like, oh, hell, you know, where are we gonna, what are we gonna do in middle school? Where are we gonna go? Is it different enough? They already have a basis of knowledge of like, oh, there's this thing and there's this thing.
To look forward to. I, and I've had parents, for example. Um, just like at the Mayfair, talking about they don't know what the field trip is in seventh grade. Now, we know what the field trip is in seventh grade. Cool, and they go to Ashland, like. You know, but. The third and fourth grade parents don't know that. So it's like, how do we make sure that information, and that's just one simple one? Is out there so they know what they're looking forward to.
Yeah, well, let me think about the acorn and how we have like that little section about, you know, what's going on in this. Class right now or whatever, you know, in the pictures and all that. But like, is, could we have a middle school corner or something like a middle school, just little section that like every. Every time we're talking about something interesting that's going on in the middle school, some. Interesting things about their um curriculum or how things are different, field trips. Um, sciences, you know, the volcano museum, the experiments, like. And maybe that's. I don't know.
Yeah, uh, the other thing that I, as I was preparing for the rose ceremony, started doing some reading, I'm like, we don't talk enough about Waldorf. Because when I started looking at what the rose ceremony was for and the seven years and it measures the. You know, those first through eighth grade, that second. Set of years and preparing, you know, it's like. We don't talk about that as, we just do the rose ceremony. We don't say, this is what we're doing, this is why we're honoring this. This change and then both the first graders and the eighth graders are going through. A change that is significant for their lives and the way they think. And so that's why we do it. I'm like, oh, I. We need to talk about that kind of, so the child development levels and. And, and what we talk about child development, mainly talking about it in terms of reading. And how we teach reading, but it's throughout the whole. Curriculum that we, the health pedagogy is based on. Now the eighth graders are ready to revolt, so we're gonna teach them about the revolution. You know, it's, you know, it's all that and.
It's the stuff we know.
Think as a parent, that's because that's what I think has brought most of the families to this school, is that type of philosophy. But then, you're right, like. We don't talk about it as much. And those are the things that I think connect us to the school versus. Just like your neighborhood school. Uh, like I didn't know the class colors progress like the rainbow. As you move through the grades. No idea, someone of my sister-in-law that goes to a different Waldorf school told me that. It was like. Thoughtful, yeah. Yeah, but I don't, but I have told so many parents that, they also do not know that.
And it's amazing that we put that much thought into it, right? But we don't share.
Well, maybe it's a task. Uh, I mean, the pedagogical team doesn't need another task. But like, what if it's, you know, if we ask them if they could come up with little blurbs? For the acorn about things that are seasonal or things that we're doing or thinking, I don't know.
Registration days is also a good. Time to have like maybe something made up about like flyers, things like that about.
And we could, we could do something that was by grade. This is what we do in third grade. Yeah, this is what your child is going into third grade in.
Over the last few years of what we actually do in those.
Right, like we have something, but it's totally outdated, but doing that again would be great, cause I used to give it a, give it out, like during the tours. So if you haven't been to a tour lately, that's what we talk about.
Yeah, and, and part of my, in bringing the new person that's gonna be mainly on the front desk. Part of that person's responsibility will be improving communication in the school, so. That's, yeah, that's. Cause that's.
I have a thought, I don't know if it would be realistic, but is there any way, like do, I don't know what the pa- uh. School shopping environment is like. I'm not a parent, but like, you know how when you're taking, you wanna find a good kindergarten, you're like shopping around in the schools, you wanna see what's best for your kid. Do people do that with middle school? Because we're doing like the kindergarten event in like fourth and fifth grade. Or not just our parents, but also inviting like prospective parents who are like shopping around. I don't know if people do that for middle. So maybe that would be worth like doing exactly what we did for kindergarten, but highlighting our middle.
Earlier, we'll, we do it, but it's late in the year. Like before New Year's?
Yeah, we do kindergarten in November, so we could do something. Yeah, and we could do something very similar and make it bigger than the, than the middle school night that. We usually have, right?
Cause we, we've treated the middle school not. Like we're talking to our own students.
But there are, I think, parents that are looking to move, just like parents are looking from here, other.
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea.
Have the specialties there too.
You can have some of the kids from those grades there to talk about stuff. So my only other thought would be. If we did a survey of how many of our family, families use social media. Just because I think putting like the experiments on like Facebook and Instagram, like what the kids are doing would be great, but then my thought goes to. Well, how many of our families do that? Cause like, I know I'm not really on social media, so I probably would never see it. But how many of our families do use it? Because it is. And I don't do it because I don't really like it, but it is a great tool. To have people see things of what we're doing that aren't just our community. To be able to have like our marketing company do ads based on, look at this cool experiment that they did in this class. But I don't know what, you know, how many of our families, that would be a good test pilot, see how many of our families that go here actually use it.
I noticed when I was doing it that the. The parents like much more reacted or liked or commented and reacted. The parents like much more reacted or liked or commented, interacted with our pages when it was student-based information.
Yeah.
Versus just a generic like.
We're great.
Be like, well, they're because of this, so here's a blue oak fact or.
Yeah.
Which was probably helpful for the prospective families that we brought in, which I think is where the marketing team is thinking from. But then when I, whenever I would like hear something from a teacher and I'd try to sneak it in there, I noticed that was the ones that got the most like. That's what the parents here wanna see, so it's like striking that balance of like, trying to bring in new people.
Yeah, but I think the parents outside of here wanna see that too, because like, if. Like, I'm always promoting in the school, so if it's something like, here's like this, what, here's what they did in seventh grade, or here's this field trip, this is making field trip, like. I, those are the things like I'll share on my page to get other people that don't go here to see this is what we do as a school, right? Versus if it's like a marketing flyer, like I don't necessarily share there as much, cause it's not very interesting, right? Um, so, yeah.
Maybe some good training for the new front desk person who, that is a job in itself, like social.
Yeah, and it's ever-changing, so. That's how to do it.
Yeah. Well, I know I, as like a teacher, I struggle to like. I used to like take pictures and send them to you and, you know, with little blurbs, but you know, with. All, you know, so many kids that can't be photographed, it's just, it's, it's hard to, like, you guys get out.
You were doing some good ones at the end of the year of like the hall of bread, but just their hands.
Yeah, and like seed sorting, I was trying, but it's, yeah, not easy, they move a lot.
Um, anything else? We can go to the next meeting, it's July eleventh. At four fifteen. And. Somebody will let you know which room that's in.